Good evening, everyone. This is the meeting of the Town Council. It's Tuesday, May 28th. It is 7:07 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The following members of Town Council are present in chambers. Persico, Kohut, Lapellis, Formicella, O'Rourke, Wales, Duvo. The following Town Council members are here remotely. Reed and Mr. Maurer, are you the 521 number?
I am.
Thank you. Mr. Reed and Mr. Maurer. There are no members of Town Council absent this evening. There's no objection. I'm going to pass the consent calendar as presented. Hearing no objection, I'll pass on consent calendar as presented. I ask that communication items A through U be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Moving on to item five, public participation. I will begin with those who are in Town Council chambers. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate this evening? Not all at once. Okay. I see no members of the public that want to participate. I am moving on to those who are here online. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate that has logged on via their phone or tablet or a computer? Please remember to unmute yourself. Uh, thank you. I, I do see one person who would like to participate. Uh, it's under Paula's iPad, but please introduce yourself. Uh, at this time, name and address for the record.
My name is Paula Jelly. I live at 290 Cottage Street. Is this general participation or is this in particular one matter?
It is, uh, it is all participation for this evening. This is the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. I will speak. I have further concerns about the exemption of town property. It being exempt from zoning and subdivision regulations. Our first selectman ran on the premise that things would be transparent. If these exemptions are permitted, if this law, if this proposed law is passed, there will be no transparency on what is going on in Monroe's town property. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh, just, uh, if you could just remove that, the hand up so that, uh, I, I could just notice whoever else would like to participate this evening. Thank you very much. Is there any other member of the public that would like to participate this evening? That is here remotely. Please remember, unmute yourself. Star six on your phone or, uh, press the microphone with the red line fluid to deselect that option. Hearing none, seeing none, closing public participation for those here virtually. One more other time, is there any member of the public here in person that would like to participate? Hearing none, seeing none, closing part, public participation. Moving on to appointments this evening. Item A, Resolution 24 dash 094. I move the Town Council adopt resolution. Number 24 dash 094 resolved that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Elizabeth Edgerton of 11 Fan Hill Road to Monroe Housing Authority for a term ending October 31st, 2028. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Lapellis. Uh, discussion, Elizabeth is a lifelong resident of the town of Monroe. She's as old as public servant who has served the town of Monroe for many years on various elected and appointed boards and commissions, including a number of terms on the Board of Education. She continues to serve the town of Monroe as a Justice of the Peace and an active member of St. Jude Parish. Elizabeth's commitment to the betterment of the community shall serve the town of Monroe well in this capacity. Uh, the appointment fills the vacancy created by the resignation of Vincent Juve, who resigned on November 24th, 2023, to become a member of the Town Council. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All of them in favor of adopting Resolution 24 dash 094? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. This is nine to zero. Moving on to item B. I move the Town Council adopt Resolution 24 dash 095. Resolve that town of Monroe, uh, that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves first selectman's appointment of Brendan Liberati of 82 West Maiden Lane to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate commissioner for a term ending October 31st, 2026. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Lapellis. Uh, discussion. Brendan is an attorney in, in New York at Hogan Rossi Legori, uh, who recently moved to Monroe in April, 2023. Brendan is interested in playing in zoning board of appeals commission. He graduated from Yukon School of Law and Colgate University and feels he can provide fresh ideas using his land use knowledge. He has experienced with working on projects within various municipalities. He enjoys spending time with family, attending concerts and planning and zoning. Uh, Brendan is a registered public. All right, uh. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of this appointment? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. This passes nine to zero. Uh, is Mr. Liberati here? Oh, yes, sir. Can you come down? Our first selectman will swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as the zoning board of appeal, in zoning board of appeals, correct? Uh, zoning board of appeals. To the best of your abilities, so help you God, upon penalty of perjury? I do. Congratulations. Now you just have to go and get, while you're sworn in here, so, um, this board will get ahold of you and let you know about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. One more this evening. Um, item C, I move the Town Council adopt Resolution 24 dash 096. Resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Claire Biajoni of 11 Sunrise Terrace, the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate commissioner for a term ending October 31st, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donaldan Wales. And discussion. Claire has been a resident of Monroe for 48 years. Claire worked for the federal government at the Social Security Administration until her retirement. Claire is an active member of her community as a volunteer for St. Jude's Parish and through school functions for her two grandchildren that are going through Monroe, uh, the Monroe Public School System. Claire is interested in helping maintain the culture of Monroe while also supporting planned and appropriate development. Claire is a registered Republican. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 24 dash 096? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, passes nine to zero. I believe she's here tonight. We look forward to be sworn in.
Raise your right hand. Claire Biajoni solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as zoning board of appeals alternate to the best of your abilities to help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to action items tonight. Action item A, Town Council Command on Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters. Madam Vice Chair.
We have not had any complaints or actions since the last meeting.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item B, Town Council Command, Planning, Zoning, Public Works and Park and Recreation Matters. Any update? No update. No update, thank you. Uh, what I will say at this point is, um, as alluded to during public comments and on our, uh, agenda this evening, we have an unfinished item of business, which is Resolution 24 dash 606, which was to consider an act upon a resolution regarding exempting municipal property from zoning regulations. Um, at this time, if that resolution is successful this evening, I am referring to this committee, um, a project over the next year uh, to review planning zoning regulations and provide uh, the full Town Council with a recommendation as to what regulations, if any, should be, uh, should apply to the town or wish, should be not applied to the town. Um, I will send a request to Chairman O'Reilly of the Planning, Zoning Commission to, uh, appoint a liaison to that subcommittee and its work on that specific action. Additionally, that subcommittee, as part of, um, its duty, shall study the impact of when, um, the authority, uh, is, if the authority is granted, uh, to study the impact, noting the number of times it was used, how it was used, and a potential community impact. Uh, moving item, moving on to item C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We did meet tonight. We talked about several, uh, new business as well as one item of unfinished business, which you actually just referred to. So that will be back in front of us at council tonight. The items of new business are the Performing Artist Engagement Agreements, two snow plowing agreements, number 7374. We also talked about the Idemia Identity and Security USA LLC Livescan Fingerprint System, the, uh, fiscal year 25 proposed budget for WMNR, a Quench Water Service Agreement, State of Connecticut Health Partnership Plan Participation Agreement, as well as a Husatonic Valley River Trail Agreement, and the Connecticut Food Share, uh, 2024, 2025 Community Impact Grant Agreement. All of those items reached consensus to come to council.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilmember Reed. Uh, moving on to item D, Strategic Planning Committee. We have not met since our last Town Council meeting. Uh, moving on to E, Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee. Uh, Councilmember.
Mr. Chairman, we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you very much. Uh, item F, our first selectman's update.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As everybody's somewhat used to the structure and the operations update. Once again, there's been a significant amount of concern about field conditions. Uh, I personally drove with our Parks and Rec Director, Miss Yoros, and looked at every field this weekend. Although all the fields could use improvements, they are in satisfactory condition. Once again, I urge all who use our fields to understand that several days of rain during the week can significantly stress our workforce. We have been mowing in moderate rain to keep up. I understand everyone's field is perfect on game day, and I have spoken to all the departments involved to do the best they can to do that for our athletic leagues. I will continue to monitor maintenance in the parks, as I also met with Public Works Director Chris Nwacki today to discuss future maintenance schedules and improvements. Um, a solemn day for Memorial Day, uh, honoring our fallen soldiers, uh, but as usual, Vita Stone did a phenomenal job in the committee. Donaldan Wales is on that committee as well. Uh, so thank you to all the departments and the parade committee for doing a, a great job. Uh, I've spoken in the past about OpenGov. OpenGov is a software program that will assist us in land use permitting and other modulators that are, modules that are available. Um, on June 10th, this Town Council meeting will have a presentation about the OpenGov software. So all are aware of its abilities and benefits. Uh, we are currently looking to other software in the event we move forward with bidding and such. This will be a very informative meeting, so I suggest all council to be present. It should take about an hour. It's typically a three-hour presentation, but they're gonna streamline it so everybody understands how it works and operates. Uh, new hires, Amy Lackioma has been brought back. Some of you remember, Amy did work for us before. She is back working in it as the elderly services coordinator, um, in place of Jean, who has sent. Chris Fracker has been brought on to Parks and Recreation Program Supervisor, replacing, um, the old Parks and Rec Supervisor that moved on to another town. Um, and Anthrue Brodmann, Inland Wetlands Enforcement Officer, uh, to assist with the overwhelming work that our Planning and Zoning Department, um, is dealing with. Uh, promotions, Rosemary, Rosemary Reiber, Special Projects Coordinator, um, in the Economic and Community Development. Rosemary was previously a part-time library aide at Edith Wheeler Memorial Library. That is the position that was empty and we were looking to fill. That came up during budget season. That has now been filled. And Kelsey McCarthy, Sanitarium Health Brand, uh, Program Planner One in the Health Department. Kelsey was previously in the grant-funded Public Health Pro, Projects Coordinator position in the Health Department. Um, emergency services update, there have been some billing concerns for our citizens from our billing company. We met with the Town Attorney on this matter, discussed how it occurred, and things are in motion to be resolved. Uh, the police ceremony, there was an awards ceremony. Um, thank you to Chief White and all who arranged that. It was very well done in honor of Monroe's finest. In capital projects update, Pepper Street, there's good news on Pepper Street. The signal located at Route 25 in Pepper Street needed to be installed to get the project to substantial completion. That signal is finally available and being scheduled for installation. Once this is completed, we'll be able to move forward with small finishing details and the financials. Um, community update, Benjamin Moore Ribbon Cutting. I was there today. Uh, a new business opening at 450 Monroe Turnpike. Uh, this event was attended by William Holesworth, our Economic and Community Director, Ray Giovanni, Chairman from Chamber of Commerce, along with Lee Osler, who arranges these welcoming events. As many of you know, this has been a location in the past for people to purchase materials for their painting projects. It is now o, open under new management, and I wish them great success. And then as far, i, in regards to grants, uh, which will be coming up. Um, Connecticut Food Share awarded the food pantry $17,300. Thank you, Kim Cassie and team at the Senior Center for this grant award, and that is my update. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, one question. Will we move on?
Certainly, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Selectman, I just had one question that a couple of people have reached out about, which is, do we currently have a vendor in mind or in place for either the pool and/or the lake for the, uh, food, for food vendors?
Well, that's a great question. So I have reached out to several companies. I, I was really trying, and Jason, I know you'll love this. Um, Meet Me Steaks was looking at doing a barbecue there. Unfortunately, it wasn't in their budget to do that. I thought that would have been fantastic to have barbecues outside and things of that nature. At this point, no, we do not. It seems to be that the profit margin to operate in those short months is not lucrative enough for people, but hopefully we will continue, um, looking and find somebody eventually. I mean, they have to work there. They also have to do a very good job, you know? So, um, at this point, to answer your question simply, no, we don't have one, but I have tried egregiously.
Thank you for the update and, uh, just keep us updated if anything changes.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, moving on to unfinished business. Item A, Resolution 24 dash 060. I move the Town Council adopt Resolution 24 dash 060. Whereas pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 8 dash 2, the Town of Monroe through its Planning, Zoning Commission has established, adopted, and prescribed zoning regulations in and for the town of Monroe, to with the Town of Monroe zoning regulations and land subdivision regulations of the Town of Monroe, collectively the regulations. Whereas Connecticut General Statute Section 8 dash 2E authorizes any town by a vote of its legislative body to exempt municipal property from the regulations prescribed by the zoning commission of such town. Whereas municipal property means any real property belonging to, held in trust for, or for the benefit of, or leased to, the Town of Monroe located within the boundaries of the Town of Monroe and used for a public purpose, including without limitation, buildings, structures, public rights away, easements, and real property used for public purposes. And whereas the Town of Monroe, uh, whereas the Monroe Town Council, Town Council is the legislative body in and for the Town of Monroe. Resolve that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 8 dash 2E, the Town, uh, the Monroe Town Council hereby exempts all municipal property from the regulations for a period of one year unless sooner amended or terminated by the Town Council. And further resolved, unless in conformity with the regulations, no permit shall hereafter issue for any development, construction, reconstruction, alteration, relocation, demolition, extension, or enlargement, or change in use of any municipal property without the prior approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission at a public rate. Is there a second? Okay. Second by Dan Duvo. Discussions, Mr. Persol.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we know, this has been in front of us before. Um, in the spirit of complete transparency, people should recognize that this is a Connecticut General Statute that has been brought to this legislative body that can only be enacted if supported by this legislative body. It is not the first selectman. It is in, a group of individuals, including yourselves. Um, I do taking into consideration people's opinions strongly. So I just want to make that very clear. Again, this is a Connecticut General Statute that can only be approved by this body. And I, I recognize this body as doing very good work. There were concerns, there were serious concerns on both sides of the aisle, strong concerns. And we worked together on this diligently to get this final result. So to me, in my opinion, this is good government. But I want to emphasize again, this does not get approved unless this body approves it. That is how the Connecticut General Statute works. Um, my belief with this, this product here, uh, this Connecticut General Statute, I don't believe that we're even gonna use this much except for St. Jude's. Many of us know that we have, um, the bond council is, uh, looking to give us $750,000 for this project, which meant that we truly needed to close on this, this thing sooner, um, this, uh, project sooner. So the goal here was to not earmark a million dollars in open space money and hold up taxpayers' dollars and to get the $750,000 bond money that has been verbally promised to me, um, by bond council. So that is the goal, that is the sole goal of, of this, this, uh, moving this Connecticut General Statute forward. And without talking anymore, I hope it moves forward. It's gonna be very useful for our community center, which many have spoken highly about and are really looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to it, and that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Formicella.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I do just have a, a question or two for our Town Attorney. Um, so it's my understanding that, um, in crafting this additional language, which wasn't present before, um, if, if there is a, if there's something that is not in compliance with our zoning regulations, it would have to go to a public hearing and be approved by the Planning, Zoning Commission.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and so that would allow individuals who are impacted by that or want their voice heard on that issue to have that opportunity to be heard in front of the Planning, Zoning Commission.
That's correct.
Um, it is my understanding that we did receive a, um, it's not for you. I'm just, just blubbing. Um, that we received a, a note from our Planning, Zoning Administrator. Um, and she's informing us that, uh, uh, the Planning, Zoning Commission determined that the proposed draft municipal exemption, uh, is acceptable and that the Planning, Zoning Commission had no additional comments. Uh, that there was in fact a motion made by Commissioner Condon on the Planning, Zoning Commission for a favorable, favorable referral to the Town Council for the proposed municipal exemption. That, uh, motion was seconded by Commissioner Maiini, and the motion passed, uh, 520, uh, that evening. Uh, and so I, I would like to thank our Town Attorney, as well as our first selectman, for hearing the concerns expressed by, uh, members of Town Council, including Councilmember Reed, Councilmember Wales, and the public, uh, who expressed their opinion about, uh, maybe some type of middle path, uh, going forward with this to ultimately better, better the town while still allowing people to have their say in these things. So I'd like to thank, uh, both of you for your tremendous efforts in getting this before, um, us this evening. Um, and so we'll, we plan to have a vote on that this, this, tonight. Uh, is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Uh, so Jason, I'm just gonna, uh, take, uh, Councilmember Kohut first. She, she did reach out to me first. Uh, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, perhaps Mr. Lido can enlighten me. Uh, if I'm reading your proposed language correctly, you're indicating that a permit would be required even under the exemption. Is that correct?
Yes, for any non-conforming, for any change of use or any development on municipal property that wouldn't otherwise already inherently comply with the regulations. I think the regulations as defined here, as the board permit may issue, it does require the, uh, consent of the Planning and Zoning Commission at a public hearing.
And what then would be the point of the exemption?
The exemption would, the point of the exemption is that this body pursuant to 8-2 is, uh, allowing town property to be exempt with a checks and balance in place that the Planning and Zoning Commission, as came through this body, the Planning and Zoning Commission would have the opportunity to also essentially agree and sign off on it for any, for any type of, again, prescribed change of use or development of municipal property, using that term loosely as I define. I think I've covered everything. Essentially, it says develop, the construction, reconstruction, alteration, relocation, demolition, extension, or enlargement, or change in use of any municipal property without the prior approval of the Planning, Zoning Commission.
So is the issue that we're facing, the set aside in the St. Jude's property based on the appraised value according to the statute, is that really what the, the issue is with regard to the, uh, St. Jude's progress?
I'm not sure what you mean by set aside, but the issue that brought this to light, um, but there were a couple of issues that brought this to light. The most prevailing issue that brought this to light right now, and the only issue that I know of that brought this to light or required this is now currently the St. Jude property, yes.
And what is it about the St. Jude property that brought this to light?
Um, that there, as I, again, I'm just repeating myself.
I, I understand.
Last year, and, um, I'll reiterate what I said, but there are a number of concerns that the town is, and including myself, are concerned would establish negative precedent that we're not comfortable with, including but not limited to, um, the town's requirement, should we go in the direction of a subdivision with that property to have to pay a significant fee in lieu of open space?
And that is the set aside that I was talking about. So the fee in lieu of open space, the restrictions on the use of that, um, money, is that it be used either for the enhancement of, maintenance of, or purchase of additional open space? Is that correct?
I don't understand the question, but that's what that money would be used for.
Correct.
But there's an issue with that.
That's the, that's the only limitation on the town's use of that money. So it's not something that wouldn't benefit the town ultimately anyway? Is that not fair to say? Okay. So we're looking to change an entire statutory framework by exempting the town for this single issue?
Um, I, I can't agree with that either.
Um, I have one other question. If you'd just give me a moment, Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate.
No problem.
So I, I have also reviewed the properties owned by the town currently. Not, not all of which are open space. Some are miscellaneous, some are undesignated and things of that nature. But this exemption would also apply to all of those properties. Is that not correct?
It would apply to all municipal property.
All municipal properties would be exempt. Okay. And this notion of the one-year limitation, this is just, it would come up at the end of a year for this body to determine whether or not to continue or to allow it to terminate. It's not a required termination at that point. Is that also, am I correct in that?
No, I, I, I don't think so. I think after one year, if there's no action taken, it would terminate. That's my opinion.
I'm not sure that that's how I'm reading the language, um, but.
It says unless sooner, sooner amended or terminated. So one year would be absolute termination, but this body is certainly free to terminate it prior to one year.
The way I read sooner, sooner amended or terminated is we still have to make a determination on termination or amendment. Okay? And again, the, 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 if I'm understanding correctly, and, you know, please enlighten me. If I understand correctly, rather than having the ability, and, and you're gonna tell me. rather than having the ability, and, and you're gonna tell me I'm wrong, but that's fine. Rather than having the ability, the a citizen, a neighbor, or a budding landowner really has virtually no recourse here in the event they have opposition to some proposed development or building or modification that the town does under this exemption.
I think I said last, uh, at the last meeting that, uh, I don't agree with that statement. And I, again, I would have to have a deep discussion into what you mean by recourse. But I believe that's accurate.
I believe what you recommend is to other civil remedies. Is that not?
I think that's one of the resources they have. I mean, ultimately, the issue was, you know, again, I, my, my memo was, I think, I tried to make it as expressly clear as possible, my.
I appreciate that.
My understanding, my understanding from the very healthy debate we had both in LNA and at this council was that, um, the general concern was that, uh, any affected citizens, and I'm putting the, using the definitions loosely, any affected citizens would have the opportunity to be heard at a public hearing. And it also was a concern that the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, would not have an opportunity to. And I think this amendment, which came from this body, um, um, does provide the opportunity for anybody, anybody uh, at all who has a concern about uh, any aspect of municipal property development, et cetera, as defined. I also added change of use, which is, I think, an expansion of that. Uh, because there was also some discussion about what if the current use of municipal property was changed, um, as well. So we had change of use as well to that. Um, it gives them the opportunity to be heard at a public hearing. Um, and it also provides our Planning and Zoning Commission to also have input and say on, uh, any further development, et cetera, as defined in the statute. So that was, that was the reason for those two changes in addition to the limitation of time.
And, and just correct me if I'm, it's input and say, but not denial.
Excuse me?
Not denial of a, of the ability to go forward as, as if they had filed for a permit and were denied a permit, the town.
I don't understand the question.
Is the zoning commission able to deny um, a use or a proposed use by the town under the language of this exemption?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I believe Mr. Mauer, uh, was next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just wanted to note that I did spend, uh, a decent amount of time, uh, talking over the past month with our town attorney, trying to craft this language. We went back and forth a couple of times. Uh, so I appreciate his time here. My, I, I was definitely one of those who, uh, had some major concerns. Uh, while I do not think this is a perfect solution, I, I would prefer to have had the subcommittee be able to do things first. That's just not realistic for the needs of it. And so, uh, in the interest of allowing the town to actually uh, accomplish its goals by this exemption, uh, I think we came to some fair language. The, the, the main caveats of what I was, uh, conditioning my support on have all been met. Those would be, one, the formation of a subcommittee to, uh, study the impacts and the future of any exemption going forward throughout the temporary nature of this. Two, is that temporary nature of this exemption that, uh, there is a sunset period where this goes. And three, the most important one to me was that language that the, uh, planning and zoning must have a public hearing if there's non-conforming property and has the ability to approve or deny, uh, any proposal, non-conforming proposal by the town. This allows the public still a chance to come forward if they do have issues and our planning and zoning, uh, the ability to say, while yes, the town would be exempt from these zoning, uh, regulations, we do not think this is, this plan is within the spirit of what we were going for with those exemptions or what we are attempting to do with our town and, uh, make denials on that basis. In fact, uh, in my reading of the regu- of the, uh, resolution here, it, it gives very broad authority to the planning and zoning as to whether to approve or deny, as there's no specific, uh, test put into it. Uh, also in talking with our town attorney, the, the other concern I had when we were drafting this was whether this, uh, would be in the spirit of the state statute or in violation of that. And uh, in his research and talking with the state, he assured me that it was. So that alleviated that concern. Uh, because of all of those concessions and changes to this, uh, uh, I do, I, I do plan on supporting it this evening.
Thank you. Uh, is there any other comment, uh, Mr. Vindu?
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead and then we'll go over. Go ahead. Um, I appreciate, uh, the changes for the members of this council and the public that had concerns. Um, hopefully that assuages, um, you know, people's concerns. I think ultimately it benefits the town. We'll have a nice facility that, um, the town folk can enjoy. And just for the record, um, I agree, it does have what, what we'll characterize as a sunset period. Um, because I, I, it's not necessary by my reading of the statute. It vests the power to do this in this body, not a lesser body or a different body. Um, but I think it's, it's reaching out and trying to, um, you know, make everyone, uh, happy and, and so it's not too offensive to them. Um, but just for the record, if it did not have that sunset, I don't know that I would support it because it is, um, in my opinion, ceding power of the town council. But I will support it. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Persico.
Uh, thank you. I, I have some concerns and I do understand that we are planning to use this just for St. Jude and in a perfect world, that sounds fantastic. And I do love that there's a sunset clause, uh, in this. Um, and I just want to thank Terry for giving me, I had requested a list of municipal properties. Thank you for getting to me and to Justin Philman, our tax assessor, for getting that for me. When I saw this list, uh, it scared me. Uh, this list of municipal property is very long. Uh, I was surprised how much property we own in the town, um, as municipal properties. And that caused me to have a lot more concerns about this because ideally we would only use this for St. Jude the next year. But I, I am nervous about this entire list and what could happen. Um, I also, I do appreciate that planning and zoning, those, you know, there is an opportunity for town constituents to speak to things that come in front of those. In my experience, uh, a lot of people don't even know when they have those opportunities to come and speak to any boards. I feel like the communication of those opportunities is lacking. And in talking to town constituents about this regulation, I did not talk to anyone who was actually for it. And that concerned me. And I also think that there are a lot of people who don't quite understand all of it. And that is why they're against it. And if they didn't know all of the details, that they might actually be for it. But I think that's just one of the problems in and of itself, that that communication of these details is just not out there for people. They're not able to see what we see. You know, obviously they can come to the meeting, they can read our minutes, and they're just not doing that. And I think that that lack of communication concerns me, uh, because people don't quite understand all these details, don't want it, and going forward, I am concerned even after the sunset clause that this will be passed to continue longer than that. And that concerns me about the future use of this as well.
Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion? Uh, Councilmember O'Rourke.
Oh, anybody else?
No, you don't.
Oh, you're, you're next. You're, you're next here.
With, uh, the, the one example that kind of, um, brought this into focus with regards to re- revising it, reviewing it, and, uh, coming up with the, uh, uh, amendments from, uh, last session when we met, um, with the EMS signage example that was, uh, that was presented to this board at our last meeting. The way this wording or this revised wording of this proposal is, is, is reading that that signage would fall under the approval of PNC, uh, via town meeting. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Alrighty, and, uh, if I may ask, uh, Mr. Chairman, do we have, uh, what, uh, LNA's opinion on this topic was? And was there a consensus on this matter?
There was. There was a consensus to bring this to town council. Uh, Mr. Mauer, uh, did explain, um, the additions and the discussion at, uh, LNA. So there was a favorable approval of, with the changes, uh, to bring this to town council for consideration.
And just to, uh, reiterate, the, one of the key, uh, alterations in this agreement, um, that this proposal can be, um, by the decision of this body, be terminated, uh, at any time prior to the, uh, one-year period that we're talking about.
Correct.
Let's see, uh, and I, I understand that, you know, there's a lot, there's a couple of comments that were presented here with regards to the town's, uh, community, you know, having some reservations about this. I'm just, you know, wondering or hoping that these addendums or amendments that we have made, the, the two key ones with regards to full participation with, uh, PNC and, um, also the mechanism for a town meeting. Would that, or does that help ally those, uh, previous concerns? Uh, I'm not sure that those folks that would have had those concerns the last go around were aware of these changes. And just hoping that, uh, this in fact does, uh, assuage any of those concerns that we had previously talked about. And then last thing, I just want to remind, if I'm wrong, please tell me. Uh, town council and all the boards and commissions in Monroe, uh, we're made up of, uh, laypersons who, uh, you know, rely on expert opinion, uh, experts in general to, uh, in order to derive a decision that best meets the, uh, the town's needs. And as such, uh, that's what we're trying to do here today. We're trying to, you know, solicit, uh, professional opinion, uh, expert opinion, uh, wide range of opinion in order to move forward. So it's, uh, it's, it is a transparent mechanism in which we are, uh, undertaking here. And I hope that, uh, everyone who's here in town council, Valerie, and might be listening as well, that they view that, that there is no, uh, effort to be less than totally transparent on this. Um, again, as it was pointed out earlier, there were, you know, reservations on both sides of the aisle, as they say, with regards to this original proposal. This proposal was then, um, reviewed, vetted, altered, and made better. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just.
Persilakman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, just going back to the original timeline on this, um, this really started out as just a, a good idea. So we didn't have to earmark a million dollars of taxpayers' money. This is how this started. This started as a good concept of all people combined saying, here's a way to do it. Here's a way to get this thing closed. Here's a way to get the bond council to produce the money to help us build that center. Here's a way to not earmark, eh, earmark a million dollars of taxpayers' money. We don't know how long that's going to be locked up for. This really started out as a good faith effort. It turned into something different. However, I did have reservations about that. And I did mention that last time. I had my own reservations. But the only way to move this forward was to bring it to town council. Where and which the town attorney and I spoke, I knew there would be turbulence here. I knew that people would have opinions. But the reality is, eh, the job of council is to speak for the people. You're all elected to speak for people. And you did. And to me, in this situation, there is no lack of transparency. This is uber transparency. This is a collective group of people that was elected by their peers to do the job that they're doing. This is a great example of government. And from the first selectman standpoint, I got to tell you, I'm really proud because a lot of towns don't have this. A lot of towns have their majority and just do it. We didn't do that. This group of people didn't do that. We worked together, we talked together, we listened to everybody and we came up with, and thank you, Mr. Town Attorney. Thank you, everybody who was involved for putting this together and making this product work. But it really just started out as a good faith effort to get the community center done, get $750,000 from bond council and not earmark and lock up a million dollars of your money. And that was how it started. And that's all I have to say. But I'm very proud of this group. I've said it before. I'm very happy to work with everybody. I think this was, this is fantastic to me. I know some people might be upset along the way and want to make their remarks, but to me, this is great government. And thank you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call for a roll call vote on this matter. Councilmember Persico. Councilmember Kohut.
Aye.
Uh, Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
John Form Kelly, yes. O'Rourke.
Yea.
Wales.
Yes.
Duba.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thank you. This passes seven to two. All right, moving on to new business. Uh, Resolution twenty-four dash zero nine seven. Madam Vice Chair.
I vote that the town council adopt Resolution twenty-nine, twenty-four dash zero nine seven. Resolution resolve that Terrence B. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the Quench Water Service Agreement and any associated documents bound between Quench for the senior farmer's water filtration system.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. There's a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-four dash zero nine seven. Is there a second? Second, second by Vindu. Mr. Persilakman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our Director of Community Social Services is requesting installation of a water filtration system through Quench Water Systems, which is a same vendor utilized by the town and police department. This installation of the system will provide cold filtered water and the cost can be covered without using town funds. Uh, this system will be paid for partly by the Healthy Needs Grant and from the Senior Center Programming Funds. This also comes with a letter of opinion from our town attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Persilakman. Uh, is there any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor adopting Resolution twenty-four dash zero nine seven, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Hearing on passes nine to zero. We'll be on to item B, Resolution twenty-four dash zero nine eight. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt Resolution twenty-four dash zero nine eight. Resolve that Terrence B. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the participation agreement and any associated documents bound between the state Connecticut Partnership Health Plan for the group policy for benefits for covered healthcare services effective July first, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second by Donald Wales. Mr. Persilakman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I look at these resolutions sometimes and I look at the amount of effort and work that goes into this. And this is, this was a very big lift. So going into this, like I previously reported, I'm going to go off script a little bit here, but, uh,
Thank you.
There, there was a, a, a huge increase from United Healthcare that we were getting talks about in the area of 28%. I, I was very upset about that. And we actually got borderline into some heated arguments that they need to come down around 10%. And to be honest with you, I can't believe that I'm celebrating a 9.7% increase. This is the condition of healthcare today. But we were looking at, they say 24.9 here. I think it was a little higher, but for the sake of the exercise, 24.9 definitely works. Uh, but you know, Craig Hirsch is here. We went through hours and hours of discussions back and forth with Lockton and how we're going to do it. And ultimately, we had to go out to market. Now, we had been, we had used the state before, but the, the rates had gone up and we made a change. And, and this is just the game, I guess, you play with health insurance, but it's not a game. I mean, we're getting health insurance for our people. Um, I just want to add the caveat into this is that this insurance plan is a great insurance plan. It's equal or better than what we had. It also adds on the ability for our people to get, uh, their children braces as well. Also, it allows in this plan to choose, uh, vision and medical separately, where before it was a, either you got it or you didn't, you know? So now if you don't need medical, you can also get vision. Um, the other thing that's been good about this health plan that a lot of the bargaining units are happy to, reason they're happy to go back to is there's an hep protocol where they have to go for physical. is there's an hep protocol where they have to go for physicals. And it used to be one year, they made it biannually. So now this has been, the way this is done, going for medical or physicals, people have been, it's resulted in catching some illnesses that would not have been caught had they not do, done that. So all in all, this is a great policy. And now I'll go back to script. As I previously reported, healthcare premiums through our existing plan to United Healthcare, UHC, we're planning to increase their medical premiums by 24.9% effective July 1st, 2024. As a result, I directed our plan be put to market with the caveat that the benefits remain consistent with the current plan. The State of Connecticut Partnership Plan, SPP, has provided an extremely competitive offer that will result in premiums only being increased by 9.7%. The town must make a three-year commitment to the SPP and plans to withdraw from UHC and move to the SPP beginning July 1st, 2024. Consistent with our collective bargaining agreements, our union leaders were notified on April 24, 2024 that the town intends to change carriers effective July 1st, 2024. At the same time, all employees were notified of this change as well. For your consideration, I have attached the particip, uh, participation agreement as provided by the State of Connecticut for a three-year term, with the town having a right to terminate our participation without penalty upon 90 days' notice. And this also has been reviewed by our town attorney. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. All of our bargaining units were, at least the ones she spoke to are in favor of it.
They were all contacted and they are in the enrollment phase as we speak.
But they're in favor of this.
Oh, yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor adopting resolution 24 dash 098, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. This passes eight to zero. Mr. Reed is having difficulty, electronic difficulties. Item C, resolution 24 dash 099. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt resolution 24 dash 099. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the professional services agreement and any associated documents binding between the town of Monroe and the State of Connecticut regarding Houston Valley River Trail Maintenance Agreement.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. There's a motion to adopt resolution 24 dash 099. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kohut. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our town attorney and town engineer have spent a considerable amount of time reviewing and negotiating agreement regarding the maintenance of certain sections of the trail owned by the state. The town will be providing maintenance to that area in an effort to allow the premise to be used for passive public recreational purposes. This agreement has been reviewed by our town attorney, who has provided his letter of opinion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor adopting resolution 24 dash 099, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing on passes nine to zero. Moving on to item D, resolution 24 dash zero, excuse me, dash one zero zero. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the town council adopt resolution 24 dash one zero zero. Resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the 2024 dash 2025 Connecticut Food Share Community Impact Grant Agreement and any associated documents binding between the Connecticut Food Share for the Community Impact Grant.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second? Second by Donald Williams. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I spoke about my first selectman update, the Connecticut Food Share has awarded the town of Monroe Food Pantry $17,300 to the 2024-2025 Connecticut Food Share Community Impact Grant Agreement. This award will be used to remodel the ramp and landings, complete a floor replacement and improvements to a partial bathroom at the food pantry. This agreement has also been reviewed by our town attorney, who provided a letter of opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor adopting resolution 24 dash one zero zero, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing on passes nine to zero. Moving on to item 10, public participation. There are no matters of unfinished, unfinished business. There are no unfinished matters of new business. There is no second public participation. I'm adjouring this meeting at 8:02, 8:03 PM. Thank you, everyone.